I cannot get this to... Oh, here we go.
Oh, good.
Is your computer working? Okay?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice of all.
Thanks. If you'd remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, please, Liz.
Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Charnow?
Here.
Councilmember Tollis?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine? Councilmember LaCron?
Present.
Councilmember Spelitch?
Present.
Thank you. Our first item is reports by mayor, councilmembers, and town manager, Grady.
I have no report, mayor.
No report. Mike?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Do have two things to report. We had a Valley Metro board meeting last week online, and just kind of like us, we had a budget review. It's a little bit bigger than ours, but obviously some things are changing daily for them as well in terms of revenues and all that kind of stuff. And just wanted to report briefly on some of the numbers. The light rail operations are down 57%. The express rapid transportation is down 90%. The buses are approximately 40% down in ridership, and the paratransit/ride choice are down 70%. So not surprisingly, that's what's happening out there in terms of Valley Metro system. And one thing, good for them, unlike us, they do qualify for federal funding to cover their maintenance and operations, so they're looking for some relief from the CARES Act for that. And the only other thing is Noon Kwanis and the town got together on Friday and Saturday, hosted a community blood drive, and we had four blood mobiles parked out in the parking lot. And they restricted the number of donors that could be in each blood mobile to two each time. And they were only taking appointments. Actually, we had to turn a lot of people away who wanted to walk in or just volunteer off the cuff. But we had 124 appointments over the two days and collected 106 units of blood. So just want to thank the town for helping us out and opening the restrooms for the employees and such during the blood drive. And the next regular blood drive is scheduled June 19 through the 20th, so hoping to be in the friendly confines of the community center at that time, but we'll see. So that's all I have.
Thanks a lot, Mike. Appreciate that. Art, do you have any reports or activities?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Dennis, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Alan, are you here by any chance?
Yes.
I am, and I don't have anything.
Thanks. Okay, Sheri?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
And Dave?
I just would like to briefly thank the Saddle Brook Grill. I was told that they had catered a full Easter dinner to both fire stations, and they also had all the deputies that were working on Easter Sunday to the restaurant to order, carry out anything off the menu for all the deputies that worked. So thanks for them supporting first responders.
Thank you very much. I actually had a few things happen. You wouldn't think we had activities, but a lot of the people are continuing to show their creativity and talent and kindness by providing information and entertainment while we're waiting to emerge out of this. Example was, I got to take part in the Fountain Hills Theater, did a virtual cabaret video. I was on there with their artistic director, who I've known a long time, Peter Hill, and their new executive director, Mike Koalit. I did an interview with KJAS, talking about how Fountain Hills was doing during the pandemic. They spoke to Rachel. Thank you so much for doing that. She's told them about our Care Card program, and that is a program that keeps seniors connected. I want to thank her for that, our staff, and our volunteers. And they also squeezed in a little bit about our 50th anniversary. Arizona Highways, which is the magazine, they have a TV show. They contacted us. They're going to be going above and beyond to feature the Grand Canyon states, cities, and towns and regions to help get people up and running when the time comes. And so stay tuned for that. We joined the hashtag Light Arizona Blue right here at Town Hall. Thanks to our staff for that. This is the governor's initiative to honor healthcare workers and first responders. So if you have any of those holiday lights, or if you have any random blue light bulbs at home, maybe you can become part of this. We continued our biweekly call with the governor's office. Grady's on those. And Senator Cinema calls every Thursday, and both of these have ongoing information and invaluable resources that we're able to share with the community. We had a town hall with Representative Schweikert. We got great help with supplies and good connections from Supervisor Chukri. And then we've had updates from Senator McSally and from Secretary of State Hobbs. So in summary, as you can see, leaders from every corner of the state are uniting to get the best outcomes health-wise and also, though, economically for our neighbors here in Fountain Hills, for our state, and for our country. Moving on, we've got a proclamation. Tomorrow's Earth Day. So speaking of people being creative, Vicki Dirksen, who's with Dark Skies and Leadership and such, she is along with Fountain Hills Live, presenting Fountain Hills Virtual Earth Day event. That'll be at fountainhillslive.com, starting at 8:00 AM. It can be watched tomorrow. Earth Day, as a matter of fact, shares its golden anniversary this year with our fountain. So as later in this agenda, we'll be tending to our 50-year-old infrastructure. We have this proclamation here about tending to Planet Earth. And everybody's been talking and wondering about how this pause in our activity is going to affect that. It'll be interesting to see how that unfolds in the coming weeks. We don't have anybody here to present it to, but I am going to read it real quickly, and then we'll get on to the agenda. Whereas Earth Day was founded in 1970 and included environmental teachings that educated Americans about the environmental and species conservation issues and connected those issues to their health and well-being, and whereas on April 22, 1970, 20 million Americans activated a bipartisan spirit that motivated the passing of the Clean Air, Clean Water, and Endangered Species Acts and other groundbreaking environmental laws. And whereas all species play a unique role in the cycle of life and contribute to the ecosystems on which all life depends, hence protecting our species is crucial to the survival of this planet and its inhabitants. By 2050, between 60 and 70% of all people will live in cities and towns. And species provide important services to these dwellers, such as generating oxygen, controlling pests, pollinating plants and crops, providing recreational opportunities and well-being. Whereas it's understood that sustainability will only be achieved by meeting the needs of the present without compromising the needs of the future, and it is important to cooperate locally to defend the environmental progress that's been gained. Whereas Earth Day is an annual reminder of the need for stewardship commitments and sustainability efforts. So therefore, I, Jenny Dickey, mayor, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2020, as Earth Day and encourage all our citizens, businesses, and institutions to use this day to celebrate the earth and promote the protection of our species. So thank you. So tomorrow, go do something good for the earth. I know we had a couple of residents here in Fountain Hills that were walking miles and miles and picking up litter along McDowell Mountain Road and also donating to charity while they did it. So I think a lot of people come up with some great ideas. So we can move on now to the consent agenda. If nobody would like to remove anything, we can get a motion, please.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Can I get a second, please? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thanks a lot. So you know we only have our one regular agenda item here today, and that is an item that we saw previously. And Grady, can Rachel will come up and do this?
Yes, mayor and council. The item before you, we've had some discussion at the council level on capital improvement projects related to the fountain and the liner in particular. Before you is a request for us to evaluate everything relating to the fountain, the lake liner, the electrical system, the irrigation system. There's a lot of moving parts, and Rachel's going to go ahead and give a brief presentation on this and explain why this is important for us to move forward with this project.
Thank you.
Ms. Goodwin?
Thank you. Mayor and council, thank you. As our town manager just mentioned, we did kind of cover this at our budget retreat, so I will be pretty brief in just these reminders. And then it's really a conversation to be had of whether we are ready to move forward with a project of this scale. So the first few photos are just kind of reminders to put your sort of thoughts towards Fountain Park. It's our beautiful namesake. You've seen a lot of these photos before. This is the structure itself. This is kind of the integrity of the structure. The lights you see, we are working towards replacing, but this is more to represent the entire electrical system for our fountain and just the condition overall. Same thing with this. This kind of gives you an idea of the condition. This is a photo of when the lake liner was replaced back in 2000. Gives you a kind of sense of scale as to how much work is really involved in that process and how much effort is going to be involved when we decide to move forward with this type of a project. So overall, let's go back one. I jumped up. My apologies. Not used to working in a PowerPoint or in a PDF. I'm usually in a PowerPoint. Right? Exactly. There we go. Let's try that again. Okay. So overall, we know that the fountain turns 50. Our mayor just mentioned that. It coincides with some other great golden celebrations. And really, we're at a point where a lot of our conditions and the assessment of the pieces of the park are in need of a conditional analysis. The nozzle, the underground piping systems, the liner itself, where we need to evaluate where it's at in its lifespan. Just a reminder that we have over 100 million gallons out there. It's 30 acres of water. We do have an aeration system out there, but essentially it's a closed-loop system. Water comes in, it doesn't go out, other than for irrigation purposes. So it is continually becoming more and more salty. But to the point, much to our Earth Day reference, it's an ecosystem for birds and fish and other wildlife out there. So there's a couple of different components. You have the pumps that are subgrade, that are below the water, and then you have the motors that operate them above grade. There's three 600-powered power motors. They've all been rebuilt within the last 15 years. They do undergo annual preventative maintenance and thermal testing. However, pressure testing and technology comparisons, we just really don't have that. If someone says, "How's it operating?", we don't know. There's no benchmark that we have for that. Our electrical system down there is impressive. It is medium. It's not low voltage, it's medium voltage. It's very technical to work with. We have to bring in particular vendors to help us with that. We do annual preventative maintenance on that as well, but it is original to the fountain and the system, so it is 50 years old. This is where we've considered a variable frequency drive to help minimize and to help, or I should say maximize, the usability of the fountain and minimize the draw of electricity. We do recommend an arc flash study for this so that we understand what kind of electrical we're working with down there and the potential impacts. Irrigation system is a single-loop system down there. This would be part of this assessment with the lake. Takes a long time to water all that acreage. It takes, especially in our summer months where we get a lot of folks walking early in the morning or late in the evening, irrigation is usually an impact on them. So we would like to look at how we could improve the irrigation and potentially a water storage option with the Fountain Hill Sanitary District. We mentioned the liner itself has a life expectancy of 20 to 30 years. The 20-year mark is this year, so we do need to start looking at that. The current condition really is unknown. It's subgrade. You can't see it. We don't know. We don't have any indications that there's a problem, but we would like to have some testing done to evaluate that. We have had questions in the past about bentonite as an option for the lake. It is not approved under ADEQ, so that is why we can't really pursue that as an option. There is considerations to be made when and how we do the lake liner replacement. There's the water removal itself. There's the waste removal of all the sediment on the bottom of the lake. There's the environmental impacts. There's odor and pest mitigation. There is the impact to the sanitary district and their output of water. There's also park access, public information efforts, impact to events, things like that. There's a lot of moving pieces. The existing landscape is also something to be considered because our irrigation would be suspended during that process. So an engineering assessment would really help us evaluate where we're at in this window. It would assess the current conditions in all of those areas, mechanical, electrical, structural, and environmental. It would help us identify priorities for maintenance, replacements, or upgrades. It'd help us to know where we're at. Are we close to the end? Do we have a number of years left? Are we barely holding it together? We really need to have that kind of engineer's look at the different parts and pieces. Obviously, there would be an emphasis on the immediate mitigation of safety or security issues. If there's anything out there that we don't realize is a safety hazard, we want to obviously tackle those first. What this also does, it helps us develop cost estimates for long-range planning. If we are going to go out to decide how to fund future measures, whether that's the liner, whether that's other replacements, we really need to know what kind of numbers we're talking about. And it helps us establish a timeline and then steps for that project management when we decide to move forward with a liner replacement program. So there's a lot of things involved in this. The last of which obviously is not, it's a cost situation as well. It's an investment. There is an investment in something like this. Hopefully, we pay dividends down the road because the idea being that if we have an assessment like this, we can plan accordingly. We can put prudent measures in place for a number of years moving forward and have a plan. As opposed to being reactionary, this would help us be proactive. The firm we're looking to contract with is Black and Beach. Black and Beach was part of the 2000 liner replacement program as well, so they're familiar with our system. They're familiar with our park. They're also familiar with the hurdles we will be facing in terms of the water removal and some of the issues that they ran in last time, including the removal of the sediment and things like that. So we are looking to contract with them. The total contract amount is $140,000. The expected work level is estimated at $120,000, and we did build in a $20,000 contingency should we find anything that we need to address immediately. I'm happy to answer as many questions as I can. I can't necessarily tackle if you have technical engineering questions, but I can at least speak to the project's size and scope.
Thank you so much. Did we have any speaker cards?
No.
No? Okay. Well, I'm going to ask the council one by one again to see if they have any comments or questions. Dave, do you have any questions for Rachel or any comments?
No, mayor. I think we covered it pretty good in the budget project.
Thank you. Sheri?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan, do you have any questions?
No, just to say good staff work to bring us to this point.
Thank you. Dennis, do you have anything that you'd like to ask?
Yes, mayor, I do. Thank you.
Great.
Rachel, if this is approved, when would the analysis begin?
Councilman Brown, that's a great question. Due to our current situation of coronavirus and other things, we were hoping to have this underway earlier this spring so that we could move a little quicker. But based on our current reality, I'm hoping that we could undertake this starting this summer and move into the fall. Some of the testing would likely coincide with some other projects we have going on. For instance, when we overseed the park, it's a natural time when we stop irrigation and we're able to do some of the liner testing and some of the irrigation evaluation. So it would probably coincide beginning, again, the summer and moving into the fall.
Thank you. And if I could do a hypothetical with you, has staff looked at, if this liner is, in fact, at the last year of its life, has staff looked at how we will handle that situation?
We have certainly played the what-if game. There's a lot of questions that we really don't have an understanding of, and that's where this analysis would really help us figure out our options. So for instance, part of this contract would identify the steps we would need to take for that liner replacement and potential options in order to make those steps. So for instance, the water removal would be step one. How would we do that? What will we do with it? What is the cost impact? This analysis will help identify our options, and then we can hopefully make decisions based on their recommendations.
Mayor, if I may, I'm not sure we really answered this question. I understand where Councilmember Brown is coming from, and that is, what if we find a, uh-oh, what are we going to do? At that point, the good news is we're going to have some engineers that are looking at this in a serious fashion on trying to address, and we will have to identify the funding source and where that might come from. We have talked, I've talked to our finance director, and there are some creative things that we could do if we had to come up with funding that we don't currently have right now, if we had some sort of an emerging emergency kind of situation. But we do really need to have some, this is really beyond just the liner. It's all the different systems that are out there are aging and need to be updated and replaced. But to your point, Councilmember Brown, this will at least provide us a pathway. We do believe that we do have a little bit more life left in the liner. But if that happens, we will quickly try to react somehow, and we will bring this back to council for you. You'll be the first to know about this.
Rachel, I actually liked your answer better than the town manager's. Thank you. And the only other question I have for you is the same question that we actually debated about where we would put the water and is the sanitation district going to actually help us?
They have been involved in this discussion up through now, and they would be part of this discussion as we bring an engineer on board. They are aware of the project. In fact, I was able to talk with Dana Tromke last week to let her know where we were in this process. She's expressed her interest in being part of this discussion and part of the solution, whatever they can do to support those efforts and understand the implications of what our options are and what that might mean for the sanitary district. So they are certainly part of that discussion, and I'm sure they'll weigh in once we've sort of identified our potential options for the water removal.
Thank you, Rachel. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dennis. Vice Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Art, do you have any questions or comments?
Hi, thank you, mayor. I do actually have a couple of comments and some suggestions on moving forward with something of this magnitude. I just feel that we should probably go with some assumptions right now, and that is that you're dealing with 50-year-old equipment. You're dealing with probably something we should be looking at, and the expectation is that it's going to need to be replaced. But I don't agree with just doing an analysis as to, let's see whether or not it is at this time. I'd rather see us put together some sort of a task force, including the sanitation district. Many of the board members there are very experienced that have evaluated the variable pump systems in the past. I believe we have a lot of data in regards to the liner, and I think we need to understand what the vision of Fountain Park is going to be and identify how we would pay for and what we would pay for based on the visioning of the downtown area and the park, rather than just throw $120,000 to $140,000. To get the answer we're probably likely going to get, and that is, you have a tremendously aging system down there that needs to be replaced, and it needs to be replaced in X a period of time, and it's going to be X amount of dollars. I'd rather see us think much, much bigger than just that and have a consultant tell us what we already realistically know. The liner right now, based on, I believe, the budgeting and projections, Grady can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was budgeted out as far as 2029, that we would have to actually replace that liner. And if there's something catastrophic that happens from now until then, at some point during that process, I'd like to know a lot more from Grady as to what the emergency remedies would be, for instance, for the fountain, and if something happened with the fountain, whether or not we would have an operating fountain or not. There's a little bit more discussion, and I think planning and visioning I'd like to see before we throw $140,000 at this project. So I would not be in favor of just passing this right now.
Thank you, Art. Grady, do you have something to?
Yeah, I just have a little bit more to add. So I'm glad that Councilmember Tollis brought up some points that we were going to bring up during the presentation as well, and that is, we are looking at there being considerable public involvement as part of this process. So in addition to all the analysis that's going to be done, and again, this is all these different aging systems that you brought up, Councilmember Tollis, that we have out there. And we're also looking at, as you're aware, the water that irrigates the park is highly salty and has a lot of salinity to it. We would be looking at also a storage system. We've had a, we've looked at that. We've also have, we want the engineers to take a look at a variable speed drive system, which we believe will also help with the wear and tear on the pumps and give the pumps more useful life. But the bottom line is, is that this is going to be a very comprehensive evaluation, and we're going to be bringing in the public because we really feel that this is going to be one of these projects that we're going to need to get the community behind. And in order to do that, we're going to have to, I would say, at some point, when it comes back to the council and there's a presentation, then our next step after the council sees the presentation from Black and Beach is that the council puts together a citizen committee to kind of figure out the logistics and the priorities that are in the plan that Black and Beach presents, so we can kind of figure out the funding and where the sources of funding will come from and come up with a sequential order of what needs to be done first based on priorities. Does that make sense, Councilmember Tollis?
I hear what you're saying, Grady. I'd like to have some visioning prior to so that when we do hire a firm that's going to give us some consultation as to what's possible and what we could create at that fountain, because personally, I don't feel that just fixing what we have is the solution, long-term solution for our community. I think we need to create something dynamic down there. I think we need to create something that's going to be a regional draw. I believe we're going to have to do something that's going to be exciting, that's going to excite the residents as well. And I'd like to have at least an opportunity for that to be discussed before we engage in spending $120,000. at least an opportunity for that to be discussed before we engage in spending $120,000 to $140,000 on, like I say, I believe we're going to find out that it's all going to need to be replaced and redone, and let's find out what we want to replace it with, and then hire someone to tell us how we're going to do it.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just, I find myself wondering how something like a regional draw in any way conflicts with moving ahead, with understanding what we have to do with the liner and so on. In other words, if they come back and say you need a new liner, we need a new liner. So we put in a new liner. We do all, make all the changes that are suggested. I don't know how that has any impact on whatever else we want to do in the park.
Thank you, Councilman Art.
Mayor, may I answer that question? Sure. It's very, very, in my opinion, it's, it's very easy to answer that question, and that is, if we create a vision that we would like to have additional fountains, and we would like to have something that was more in line with a Bellagio style of some sort of a venue down there that would help us with the irrigation of the water, that would help to eliminate the smells that we tend to have when that fountain goes down, what would, what would that incorporate for the plumbing, for the ability to have the pumping systems necessary? What would we like to do in regards to possibly having some sort of low-ground speakers that would have nice music, that would be something that people would enjoy, that would, that would attract people to come to the park? There's a lot of different things that potentially could happen down there, and I think there's probably a lot of different opinions as to what could be done, but I'd like to see some input from the public before we spend $140,000 on telling us what we would need to do to duplicate what we have now. I don't, I don't believe what we have now is the future of our community.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Vice Mayor if you have any comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. While I agree with some of Councilman Tallis's statements, it seems to me this, this study, I agree, it's a, it's a big chunk of change, but on the other hand, I see it as kind of the, the baseline, a place to start in terms of what we can do down there, what we need to do just from a basic infrastructure point of view, and then, and then go into a possible visioning process or whatever. That might cost a little bit more, maybe not a lot. If you bring in some kind of planner or architectural firm, land planning, that type of thing, those things, you know, maybe we could do a town hall-type meeting, who knows? I, you know, and I think some of the ideas about making the park more than what it is in terms of a passive park, I think is, tends to sometimes go into the controversial area, and I think right now, we just need a, a in-depth study of what's there, what, what needs to be replaced, and then we can start talking about going beyond that. I just think we might be putting the cart before the horse if we get into this big, grand visioning process and stir up all kinds of controversy and this and that. I mean, we've kind of been down that route, and I, I just, you know, infrastructure was, was a term thrown around during the property tax debate, and it was kind of poo-pooed. But this is, again, just a prime example of, you know, streets and drainage issues like panorama in, in our parks. I mean, this is all coming back to, this stuff costs money. It ages, and, and we need a good, firm grasp on how much all this is going to cost. Maybe at that point, the sanitary district, you know, would be willing to chip in something if we get some hard numbers in terms of how it's going to impact them, how they can help, you know, the citizens as well. We all serve the same, same people. So I just, I think this is the right way to go right now without pushing any additional buttons, and I think this is just a good baseline, a place to start.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments?
Mayor, may?
Uh, yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. I, I see, oh, Councilmember Charneau and Councilmember Tallis' thoughts on this, and I, I see the middle road, and I believe that we, I personally believe that we need to go ahead and find out the longevity. We need to do the studies on everything that Black and Beach is offering to do us at this point in time, so we will be able to plan for the money that we're going to have to assemble to keep our fountain running. And a perfect example is, let's shut the fountain off for about six months and see what Fountain Hills does. And that's not going to hap, I pray to God that doesn't happen. But that would be a really good way to take the temperature of Fountain Hills. Should shut the fountain off, and do we want to spend the money for it, et cetera, et cetera. But I think that the baseline, as, as Councilmember Charneau said, is we have to know what we're dealing with so we can plan in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions? Thanks a lot. Can I please get a motion?
With that, I'll go ahead and move to approve the professional services agreement with Black and Beach, contract number 2020-080, and the associated budget transfer.
I'll second that.
Second.
Thank you. If there's a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Thank you.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you, Liz. Thanks, Rachel, so much. Our, our last item is, as always, the discussion and direction to the town manager. Anybody have anything? No? Thank you. Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Yes.
I do, I do have something.
Okay.
Grady, can you, thank you, discussion, discussion, there's a lot of signs that are now going up in downtown area. If you can give us an update in regards to the progress from the public works and what's happening with the roads.
Sure, Councilmember Tallis. So as Councilmember Tallis brought up, we are starting to do our pavement management program, and because of council input last year, they wanted to, the majority or consensus of the council was to try to get as much of the downtown in as possible. And so we started working on street closures this week, and we anticipate by the end of the week or early next week, you'll have these new streets in place. Just to let you know, we also will be bringing forth a contract for the roundabout coming up in the near future. And the roundabout, we can't do some work because of the roundabout and the location, but once the roundabout's in, then we'll be doing some, some finishes around it so it has a nice finished look to it with the next phase, which will be next year. Of course, we have a lot of other neighborhoods that we're going to try to get into and other streets as well, but that is what is planned for right now. Thanks for bringing that up, Mr., or Councilmember Tallis.
Thank you. One, one follow-up question in regards to that, and particularly in regards to that roundabout area and, and the project downtown. Would it be possible for you to share with the council, maybe via email or maybe our next meeting, an update on the project that's happening downtown, and just review the design concept for the pedestrian walkway? That, a lot of questions have been coming up in the public forums, and I just want to make sure we review that again and just bring people up to speed and just remind them of what was all in the process to get to where we were in regards to deciding on this roundabout.
Sure. So if I understand, are you talking about the pedestrian access where the roundabout is, or are you talking about Keystone and what's coming out of Keystone, or are you talking about at Verde River?
Yeah, the tie-in, yeah, the tie-in with Keystone and the pedestrian safety measures that are being taken.
The staff and I will be happy to forward on to council an update on that.
Thank you. Also, I think, not our next meeting, but maybe the one afterwards, when we'll be having our pavement management program in, in May. So that'll, that should help fill in some of the blanks, too. Anything else? And did we already do a motion to adjourn? I don't remember.
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you all. Stay well.